All right. Good evening, everybody. I have seven o'clock and would like to reconvene the October 24th council member. We're honored tonight to have members of the Veterans Committee with us, and we would like to ask retired Lieutenant Colonel Jeff Noble and group to please lead us in the pledge.
I would be honored, gentlemen. Absolute. I want to make this a flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, without any test at all.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we will ask our council member and veteran John Reiner to present the group with a proclamation.
Gentlemen, it's always a pleasure, and I'm always honored to be with you. The proclamation reads, whereas on November 11th, 2022, the city of Dublin will join the rest of the country in celebrating Veterans Day by honoring America's veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. And whereas the date of November 11th was first observed in 1919 after President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed it to be American Armistice Day in recognition of those heroes who had served our country during World War I. And whereas it was intended as a day to be observed with parades and public meetings and a suspension of business beginning at 11:00 a.m. And whereas in 1954, Congress approved renaming the day to Veterans Day to expand the significance of the commemoration and the honor of American veterans of all wars who fought to preserve our freedoms. And whereas there are now 19 million veterans across the United States who have preserved the peace domestically and throughout the world over decades of conflict. And whereas Ohio is the home of more than 700,000 veterans, the sixth largest population in the United States. And whereas the city of Dublin and Wesley G. Davis American Legion Post 800 invite veterans, their families, and all Dublin citizens to a public ceremony at the grounds of remembrance in Dublin's Veterans Park on the 11th day of the 11th month, Friday, November 11th, at the 11th hour, for a time of recognition, remembrance, and reflection. Now, therefore, I, Jane Fox, Mayor of the city of Dublin, on behalf of the Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of November 6 through 12 as Veterans Week in the city of Dublin, urging all citizens to recognize the sacrifices made by veterans and encourage them to display the U.S. flag and show support to all the men and women who have served this country. Sign this 24th day of October 2022 by Mayor Jane Fox. Gentlemen, thank you. I just want to say it's an honor to be amongst you. I think one Veterans Day, we had a lady who was a MASH nurse and described the carnage of being in that war and said to the youth there that the heroes of America aren't sports figures, aren't movie stars, they're you folks. Colonel?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I have the microphones so I can talk.
Yes, you do.
Good. Members of council and city staff, we invite you to join us for Veterans Day, Friday, November 11th. We start the day with breakfast at La Chadelaine, complimentary for veterans, good time, get together, tell lies, you know, it's all good. The event takes place or the ceremony takes place at 11:00. Hopefully, and I ask you to hope and pray for good weather, we do it at the park. If not, we do it in the gym at Sells Middle School. Speaker this year is Mike Kelwington, Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Army. He's the professor of military science at OSU. Some of you remember the name because his wife made the presentation at Memorial Day this year. So we look forward to his talk. I'm sure it'll be very good. And we look forward to seeing you all in attendance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your service, and we're happy and pleased to be able to continue this wonderful tradition. So thanks very much, and we'll see you on the 11th. Great. Thank you. This is a time on our agenda where it's an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a comment or have comments been received online, Lindsay?
There have not.
Great. All right. Seeing none, we'll move along to the consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any of the items from this consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Jamie, will you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Great. We're moving. We have one postponed item, and that is ordinance 30-22.
Adopting the 2023 through 2027 five-year capital improvements program.
Great. Thank you. And our staff report this evening is for Matt Stifler. Matt?
Good evening, members of council. There was a memo that detailed the changes that have been made to the CIP since coming to council's consideration on August 8th. Those changes have been made and are reflected in the documents attached to that ordinance, and staff recommends adoption of the 2023 through 2027 CIP at tonight's council meeting.
Great. Thank you. Lindsay, any public comment?
No.
Discussion questions from council? Nope. Hearing none. Jamie, will you please call roll?
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Great. Matt, thank you to you and staff for a lot of work. We look forward to putting that in motion. Thank you very much. Second readings, public hearing ordinance. I'd like to make a motion to waive council rules of order to read ordinances 39-22 through 48-22 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Jamie, will you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Our staff report this evening is Mr. Hammersmith. Paul? Great. Do we have any public comment?
No.
Questions, discussions from council tonight? Hearing none. Jamie, will you please call roll?
Yes.
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 Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to waive council rules of order in order to read ordinances 49-22 through 51-22 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Jamie, will you please call roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Great. Back to you, Paul?
Yes. Once again, council, we have no new information to provide with regard to these three ordinances. The information is as was presented at the first reading, and staff does recommend adoption.
Any public comment tonight?
No.
Questions, comments from council? Hearing none. Jamie, please call roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
I move to waive council rules of order to read ordinances 52-22 and 53-22 together. Is there a second?
A second.
Jamie, will you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Our staff report this evening is from Mr. Matt Herman. Matt?
Good evening, members of council. The only thing to add to the information in your packet, based on our conversation at the last meeting, staff will be preparing a communication plan for this project. That plan will be outlined, summarized in the resolution for the bid acceptance, pending any favorable bids for the project. So that will be coming before you for the November 7th meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. Any public comment? Council discussion?
Matt, I just have one. Last time we spoke about this, there was the design that was in place, and then there was going to be some potential revisiting of that. You're going to have unit cost numbers on all of these items.
The bid that we will receive will be based on the actual planting plan. If we choose to go back and add trees, then we will add to the project at that time based on what those needs are, and at that point, they will be itemized.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
So Matt, just for clarification, the plan after bid acceptance, et cetera, will still be to do that this fall. Is that correct?
That is our hope. It will be based on the contractor, weather, and the availability of trees, but we anticipate that work to begin within days after the acceptance.
And the communication before then, then, of course?
Communication will go out well before then, yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Jamie, will you please call roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ordinance 54-22.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an easement agreement for driveway purposes with Young No for access to the property located at 8218 Riverside Drive.
Thank you. Staff report. Mr. Hammersmith?
Good evening, members of council. With regard to this ordinance this evening, based on the discussion at the first reading on October 10th, we did provide an updated memo addressing some of the follow-up information we said we would provide and tried to answer some of the questions that came up during that discussion. If you have any questions on those items, I'll be glad to answer that. Other than that, staff does recommend approval of this ordinance this evening, and I believe a representative of the property owners is here this evening. If you might have any questions for him.
Great. Any public comment? Discussion from council? John, you look like you want to-
Yeah, I just have a question for one of the owners of the property, if they could come forward. Are you- Oh, hey, General.
Probably can answer quickly.
No, I just have a question. You know, it made sense to enter off of-
John, just one second. Could we please get your name and address before we can? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Christopher Klein with the firm of Haynes Kessler in 300 West Wilson Bridge Road in Worthington, representing the applicants. So we call them Kylie and Johnny Young.
Thank you.
The question, really, I could see, you know, earlier there was a curb cut off Arrowhead Drive, which sort of made sense. And I guess are we putting in a new road at Mommy off of that road? Is that what we're intending to do, right?
It's- If you, this is a platted subdivision, believe it or not, platted in the 1920s. And it was back in prehistory, Dublin, prehistory days. And there's, I guess you could call it a paper subdivision because these roads are platted, they are dedicated and accepted. It was accepted by Dublin's predecessors and governmental predecessors. But along the northern boundary, you have Mommy Avenue. And if you look at the plat, that is there along with another, what, five or six roads that legally are right-of-way, but they haven't been built. And so as we, initially, the plan was, you can see on the drawing, down where that sort of like bouldery place looks down there, that is where there was to be the access so that you'd have it coming in off of sort of an organized road, Arrowhead Drive, which in fact was just another private driveway that, you know, ceded to the status of being a public roadway. That fell through, that civil arrangement didn't work. So we had to try and figure out a different, better way to do it, or another way to do it. And the city justifiably has reservations about putting in multiple curb cuts along Riverside Drive. And the path of least resistance that we arrived at and working with Paul and with Jennifer was to simply put in a driveway in that existing right-of-way that is there. And the benefit is that that locates an access point to Riverside Drive that will not change because to the north, all that land is park, as I recall. So as this area develops, and it likely will once the sewer line comes up along the river or along Riverside Drive, that this driveway that right now is going to be a 15-foot private driveway, just a driveway, but it has the ability to be expanded, just as Arrowhead Drive next to the south was expanded and became an actual paved public road. But for right now, what we'll see is a driveway that is there within the right-of-way.
You know, Chris, the only thing I worry about is, you know, it's a fairly high-speed road, day and night. And for us to keep putting in these streets, that's something maybe the city will have to look at. How many of these, you said they were old and they were platted in the olden days when, you know, there was 20 cars moving up and down that thing. It had a fairly decent clip, but so, you know, it's- I know this is going to be the solution to this problem, I presume. But I am sort of worried how many more of these kind of little roads are plotted up and down there because that is a fairly high-speed road. And there's no way to build a pullover lane on that because there's a swale along the cliff face there and a lot of it. So it's a concern because I'm just more or less worried about the traffic and the, you know, the danger. And so I see what you're doing here, and I know that these lots will be consolidated, right? Because in time, because they're on septic. So they're all going to be consolidated into, because there's no sewer there. So they're going to shrink down. So I guess my worry is in the future that, you know, we start cutting these swas up that hill. And then, you know, I think we might have to take a total look at this and say, okay, we're probably not going to get a sewer there for a long time, if ever. And the consolidation of these lots is important because they're all going to be on septic. So there's going to be a number of these existing lots to make up one lot. So I think we'll have to take a serious look at that from a planning standpoint.
I had the discussion with Jennifer Rouse, Mr. Reiner, and I pointed out that, believe it or not, Shawnee Hills, which has these, I think they were planned initially to be like a place for people to get out of the city, have a 50-foot lot, they could have an outhouse and a trailer or shed, you know, a shack, for lack of a better word, on them. And I don't think they're truly envisioned as full-time residences. But I mean, that's back in the 1920s when this was done, not just here. We've got several of these subdivisions in Dublin, but also in Shawnee Hills. Shawnee Hills has brought a little bit of method to the madness with, they have an ordinance that describes how this redevelopment will take place because obviously lots do need to be combined. And it, their onsite system, the HSTS, Household Sewer Treatment System, is how they're referred to. They're not just septic anymore. There are a number of them, different ways that can be done, which is actually pretty environmentally friendly and do not need the size lots that we used to use, the Board of Health would require. The Board of Health has always had this magic 40,000-square-foot number, which, you know, pretty much exists across the state for a lot size that, you know, was sort of an additional, like zoning requirement. Because you needed a big enough lot, you could have the septic tank, you could have the leach bed. And then if that failed, which leach beds eventually will, you've got enough room for another one. But now these new modern systems, which are a lot more expensive and a lot more environmentally friendly, do not require that much space. So even if you do not have the sewer systems available, it's probably going to be technically capable of redevelopment, maybe not to the same extent as our established Dublin subdivisions. But you're right. What I'm saying is a long explanation of saying, yeah, and I think the city probably ought to think about, you know, what's the future hold and what's the best way to do this.
Yeah. We've been very concerned about sewage leaking along housing, along the river. And, you know, our contribution to that, and so far, I think we're doing a pretty good job having Franklin Park or Franklin County check the systems and make sure they're still functional and they're not leaking into the river. So, but it is what it is. It's something that we're going to have to really look at and figure out what the future is going to be. Because these lots, if we're going to have septic, we're going to have to consolidate the lots and make them work.
If you look at the drawing of the subdivision, you notice that to the east, there is another road that sort of rims this subdivision on the north. So, you know, the potential exists to use that as a, as a, as a, as sort of a collector road that could possibly avoid having multiple access points on the Riverside.
Yeah, that road was never built. Arrowhead Drive just goes up and dead ends there. But you're right. You're absolutely right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your explanation.
Any other comments?
Paul, I have one. Thanks for addressing the slope concern. Looks like that this one's going to be around 8%. So I don't know if we can condition anything, but in the event that these additional lots in someday in the future would have a desire to be developed of having the onus fall on to whoever is building these additional lots to make the corrections on the slope of the road so that it meets Riverside Drive at a more natural grade.
I did look at that, and, you know, presently, Arrowhead Road itself is probably in the 8% to 10% range. And it just follows the natural topography. So in order to flatten it out, you know, we potentially have to put in some retaining walls or something down there. So at Riverside Drive, it's flatter than as you keep going east. So I think the potential exists to keep it as flat as possible. And one of the things that we allowed in the easement agreement is if in the future the city wants to put in a public road, you know, it would be a designed public road, and we would be able to address it at that time as well in terms of the grade.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, just one more comment. You know, if you look at all these little mini lots like Chris had stated over in Shawnee Hills, they were really made for little shacks, fishing shacks. And you'd had to put five or six of them together to get a, be able to get a building permit for a house. And this is something we haven't addressed, but just looking at it, I didn't realize these plots are still floating around, these, this many lots up and down. And at the time, did they think that these were for actual homes that could have a septic system? Or when they platted this thing, or?
I wish I could tell you what they were thinking in 1920.
It doesn't seem like-
I'm guessing they were intended to be recreational cabins and of that nature along the Syoata River. At that point, not really intended to necessarily be someone's permanent home on these lots. If you look at the Nung property as it's combined, it's like almost 1.3 acres. So it took six lots to create a 1.3-acre parcel in order to do an on-lot system. So I think you're going to see more of that. And when you look at the ownership itself, there's actually several lots that are owned by one owner in the neighborhood. So I think you're going to see over time, as sanitary sewer and water get extended to this area, which really is not that many years off. It's area 2C design is programmed for 2024 and construction in 2025 in the present CIP. So, you know, I think that will spur development of combined lots in this neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Hearing none. Jamie, will you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Introduction-
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Introductions, first reading, public hearing, ordinance 5522. Adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023.
I'll introduce.
Thank you. Our staff report this evening, Matt Stifler.
Good evening, members of council. I'm pleased to bring before you the proposed 2023 operating budget as part of ordinance 55-22. Excuse me. The schedule is on October 10th, we held the presentation for revenues. On October 17th, we had our first work session last week. We have the first hearing tonight. We will have a work session on November 1st. And this will not be before you again for a second hearing until November 14th. So this will not be on the November 7th agenda. As far as revenues and operating expenditures, as we discussed at the revenue presentation and the work session, operating revenues for next year are forecast to be 94.1 million, which is a very slight reduction from the 2022 operating budget. As you can see here on this graph, income taxes continue to be the most important revenue stream for the city of Dublin. In terms of proposed operating expenditures, we're proposing a $100.3 million operating budget, which is about a 1.5 million or 1.5% decrease from the 2022 operating budget. These decreases were discussed at the work session in greater detail. But as a summary, you can see that those are the recommendations being brought forward. In terms of how revenues and expenditures are balanced, there is a negative budget variance budgeted this year, as has been the case in the city historically. However, this negative budget variance is significantly reduced from last year's negative budget variance, which if you consider the budgeted non-recurring federal revenue, which is not typically part of our budget, made that budget variance approximately $11 million. And here we're just over $6.2 million. So we've closed the gap considerably. I think we still have some more work to do, but we're still in a very difficult economic environment. In terms of our expectations, though, as was discussed at the work session, and to be clear, here, we have a operating budget reduction of $1.5 million. But we are absolutely expecting expenditures to continue to increase in this environment as service delivery levels programmed in 2023 remain the same as 2022. You can see here that we're forecasting approximately $88 million in expenditures for the operating budget in 2022, which forecasts out to between 90 and 92 million in 2023. So we are projecting increased expenditures as we maintain service delivery levels in this inflationary environment. But we are reducing our budget to better match our actuals and budgeted expenditures. As far as the general fund policy compliance, as required by our policy, we are exceeding the 50% minimum. I would also point out that the reason that this approaches the 50% is that we programmed a $6 million transfer in the CIP that will be coming from the operating budget next year. Absent that transfer, this estimate would be in the 60%, low 60% range. So that transfer does have an impact on the numbers you see here today. But even with that transfer, we are in compliance with our policy. With that, I'm available for any questions, and staff recommend approval of this ordinance at the November 14th meeting of city council.
Thank you, Matt. Lindsay, do we have any comment this evening? Council questions, comments? Great. Thank you and the team. I know this is truly an all-team effort, all-staff effort, and there's been significant amount of work, and I know there's more work to be done. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the dialogue. And we'll look forward to second reading on November 7th. on November the 7th. Thank you very much.
Can I clarify, is it November 7th or November 14th?
Oh, 14th.
Thank you.
I've got the 7th here, sorry. Great, November 14th, thank you very much. Ordinance 56-22.
Amending Chapter 35 of the codified ordinances to revise the fee and service charge revenue cost comparison system and establishing a schedule of fees and service charges for the city of Dublin services.
Honored to do so. Thank you very much. Good evening, and our staff report is from Megan Murphy.
Yes, good evening, council, this evening we'll be reviewing the proposed updates to the cost study ordinance, which is the comprehensive update to the city of Dublin fee schedule. To provide some additional background, last year, the city applied an inflationary adjustment of 1% the rate at the time to fees in 2022. For 2022, which is a full update year, the finance department conducted a comprehensive analysis using the city's consultant from revenue and cost specialists, who the city has used since 1994. For this process, finance collects the data necessary to calculate the fully allocated or the fully burdened rate for city positions. To collect this data, staff meets with individual departments to review the estimated hours dedicated to each city service, and also to calculate the hours that should go to the general overhead as well. In addition to salary allocations, maintenance, operational costs, and building occupancy are also taken into account for these fees. Also to note, all fees were reviewed based upon current cost recoveries, and proposed increases were made to fees to bring them to their established target recovery. A complete listing of fees and all applicable changes can be found in the fee schedule, and also in Appendix A of the ordinance. First fee we'll take a look at this evening is the police department, who has one fee increase in 2023, the impound and abandoned vehicle release has a proposed $5 increase for 2023, and as a note, this fee does not apply to victims of crimes or accidents. Updates to engineering's fees for 2023 are proposed increasing of five fees, the street renaming, private waste disposal, flood plain inquiry, damaged light pole repair, and street traffic sign service. There are currently two fees with proposed increases in the fleet division that specifically would impact other jurisdictions. First, the fuel surcharge is proposed increased by two cents for diesel and gasoline fuel, which is purchased by Dublin City Schools and Washington Township. The annual increase in cost to the schools would be about $4,000, and to the township about $500. And the second fee is for Washington Township fleet maintenance, and that has a proposed increase of $5 in 2023. There are currently two fees with proposed increases in 2023 in street maintenance, the spilled load cleanup and damaged property repair both have a proposed increase of $10 an hour. There are currently two cemetery fees that are proposed to be removed in 2023 and two proposed increases. The proposed removal of the cemetery maintenance and cemetery lot sale fees is due to plot availability. If additional city land is purchased for cemetery use, these fees will be reinstated at an appropriate rate reflective of the new land value. And then the first proposed increase fee is the interment service fee, which has a proposed increase of $20 for weekdays, and a $30 proposed increase for after-hours and weekends. And lastly, the legacy tree and bench fees have a proposed $370 increase for legacy trees, and a proposed $15 increase for legacy benches. Next, let's take a look at the updates for the planning fees in 2023. The planning director and finance staff reviewed hours and updates were made due to staffing changes and efficiencies. One fee increase is proposed at 6% for the final plat review, raising that charge from $3,035 to $3,215 for the commercial industrial review. And you might be wondering, why are there not any additional fee increases proposed in planning, and only one fee increase is proposed first, due to full-time staff changes from the previous comprehensive cost study, which decreased the overall salaries in this analysis. And then secondly, no increases were proposed because upon evaluation of these services, the hours shifted from senior staff, resulting in direct costs of services actually being And next, before taking a look at the recreation fee increases, we can briefly review the recreation cost recovery policy. In 2018, modifications were made to support a more self-sustaining funding model, and in the current environment of escalating costs, finance and recreation are working in partnership to ensure fee increases offset the increased costs associated with providing recreation services, and move in the direction of a compliance with recreation cost recovery policy. The cost recovery policy was reviewed by the finance committee on September 13th, and a recommendation was given to continue to defer policy compliance changes in 2023. A modification to capital costs allocated in the policy was also recommended, and this included the removal of the Dublin Community Recreation Refresh from the policy as another funding source was identified. When project costs are known, this project will be brought forward again for additional The recreation fee increases proposed to the Dublin Community Recreation Centre, DCRC, and outdoor pool rates in 2023, the, just to note, the cost study, or cost recovery for 2022 is currently at about 52% of direct costs, meeting the policy target. However, this is due in part to the current economic climate and labor market, leading to the underutilization of the budget for part-time staff. Proposed fees support the continued increase in cost recovery, but are not likely to recover the capital costs as required by the policy. For the DCRC daily rates, there's a proposed increase of $1, and the proposed changes to the DCRC annual memberships are shown in the table to the right and reflect a 5% increase for all membership types. And for 2023, the outdoor pools' daily rates are also proposed to have a $1 increase across all admission types, and membership pricing is proposed to increase 10% for all membership types, and you can also see these changes in the table to the right. And look, next, looking at community events fees, so after working with community events staff, a phased increase is proposed for Tier 1 and Tier 2 event permits. As a quick refresher, Tier 1 events typically do not require city services or a meeting with a permitted events committee. So a $75 annual phased increase for Tier 1 through 2025 is proposed. Tier 2 events do require some limited city services and warrant a meeting with a permitted events committee, and a $25 annual phased increase is proposed for Tier 2 through 2025. The goal of these two phased increases is to allow the events community time to budget and plan for future increases. Additionally, Tier 3 categories were added to distinguish the review process and staff time difference between the Tier 3 new or sustainably different events or reoccurring events. So a Tier 3 event typically requires multiple city services, multiple permits and warrants, and at least one, if not more, permitted events committee hearings. The Tier 3 new sustainably different proposed fee is $5,000 for 2023, and the Tier 3 reoccurring proposed fee is $2,500 for 2023. And to note, the previous Tier 3 fee was $3,475, so those reoccurring events will not see an increase in fees with this proposed fee adjustment. Building Standards is the final division, who suggested fee changes will be highlighted this evening. The current total cost recovery is 62.5% for Building Standards, and the target total cost recovery is 100% as set by council. The proposed increases of 30% to some of these fees is to bolster that cost recovery over the next few years. And although these increases seem substantial by percentage, in most cases, these increases translate to an additional fee of $50 or less, and in some cases, an increase of $5. This increase of 30% is projected to bring us closer to an 80% cost recovery from that 62.5%. To reach a full 100% cost recovery, a 60% increase would actually be needed. And all of these fee increases are outlined in Appendix A. And now, we're gonna take a quick look at a few of these residential building fees with high units of service, that these higher units of service reflect higher resident utilization. And from this sample of fees, we can see that the unit subsidy often outpaces the 2023 proposed fees. In November of 2020, council received a cost of development memo comparing the city's development costs to other cities in the region. To the right, you can see a table with the updated proposed Dublin building fees as compared to Columbus, Westerville, and New Albany, on a mock commercial building of about 17,000 square feet. With the proposed building fees for 2023, Dublin maintains a more inexpensive cost of development when compared to Columbus. And on this slide, we can see Building Standards' direct cost recovery has fluctuated over the past 17 or so years, as a result of both the city's growth and economic environment. The fees charged by Building Standards are calculated to recover both direct and indirect costs, and they have recovered close to 100% of direct costs over the past 10 years. However, this cost recovery is falling a bit short of the required additional indirect cost share. And lastly, in an effort to examine the overall cost recovery of Building Standards, we'll take a look at the 2023 proposed operating budget. And overall, the 2023 proposed operating budget highlights a reduction of 5.9% from 2022, and the other charges and expenditures reduction you see there is due to refunds, and then all other reductions were made based on utilization. And just a closer look at what is included in that 2023 proposed budget, we can see that the Building Standards budget is a majority personnel services, and the second largest budgeted costs are for plan review and building inspection services. And thank you for your time, and at this point, I'm available for any questions.
Megan, thank you very much. Any public comment this evening?
No.
Questions, discussion from council? I had a couple questions, back on the events, if you could pull that back up, it might be easier.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, thank you. So I was wondering why Tier 1 events, if they don't require really any city staff or involvement, why are we going from $50 to $200?
Yes, so...
I was curious about that.
Yes, of course, and I would be happy to confirm with Allison for further information as well, but it's not that they don't require any city staff, because they're still through the events process, but I can confirm with her what hours are actually needed and bring that back to as well, if...
Here comes Matt.
Those Tier 1 fees are associated with staff time to review the application for the permit, it requires a committee of several staff members to conduct that analysis, so that is a direct cost recovery for that time.
Yeah, I guess my only question or concern is, you know, we really like to encourage these community events and activities, and I just wonder if a four-fold increase here is gonna deter some of these smaller events from happening, if, I get that we have to review them, but I just, because if I understood, your Tier 3 today, the recurring Tier 3 got a decrease from 3,000-something to 2,000-something, right? These great big events that are gonna have something like 2,500 people, that's going down in cost, but this is gonna, I would just, that seems...
The best way I can describe it is, these rates that we are bringing forward tonight are basically market rates that we find in other municipalities that are holding similar types of events. That analysis was conducted. As far as the Tier 3, the reoccurring events, it takes a lot less time of staff to revisit the application that we've already experienced from the previous event, so it's reflective of staff time in actual costs.
Okay.
Matt, about how many events, and you may or may not know, how many Tier 1, Tier 2, the Tier 3 events are listed there, but about how many Tier 1 events do we have in the city a year?
I can get you the actual number, but I'm gonna say probably around 50.
So I guess my only quick question is, we talk about a cost recovery model, and then you say we have market rate comparisons, so we seem to have a little bit of apples and oranges here, we have some cost recovery, we have some market rate, and in some comparisons. So I would just encourage to look at some of these smaller tier events, I just wonder about that increase, but if the cost recovery and the others are, means it could go down for some of these large events, okay, but seems like we've got apples and oranges on this one, where we didn't, maybe on some of the others, so.
I will provide you with a follow-up to that in greater detail, and I'll confer that with Allison, and make sure we got, give all the information to you.
I appreciate that, just wanna encourage, you know, community events if we can, so. Other comments or thoughts on this? John?
Yeah, I was just curious, where would the, we had a sort of impromptu, not impromptu, but a really nice Japanese event, where would that fall into this category? Is that, I guess that's tier 3 right now, under, if they wanted to have that event again here, and...
It would all depend on the variables there that are before you, with the number of guests, whether they have alcohol, the road closures, things of that nature that would come into play, so if they're not meeting any of those, it would be a level, it would be a Tier 2 event.
Okay, so, you know, and what I'm worried about is the New Bridge Park, you know, we do wanna try to encourage events, art shows, barbecue, Korean festival, whatever, without scaring away the applicants, so it's really important to us, I think, to see that that park gets used, that there's something fairly exciting going on every month or every couple weeks there, and just didn't want to discourage them from, you know, the application fee's so high that, you know, we can't raise the money.
Understood.
I'd also like to point out that they would have the potential opportunity to apply for a bed tax grant as well, you know, so there's the opportunity to offset some of the fees, whether it's city services or what have you, through the bed tax grant, and we do get them, we get ones that are recurring, we get ones that are not recurring, that actually, I think, can help to offset some of this just a little bit, because there is a cost recovery model that does happen in terms of staff time that's spent even on these smaller events. And I know that staff is really good about communicating with folks who are bringing events to us, that there's an opportunity for that bed tax grant to help offset some of those fees, so I just wanted to throw that in the mix.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll look forward to some updates on that, appreciate that. Second reading will be on November the 7th, thank you very much for all your work. Let's see, introductions, public hearing, resolutions, Resolution 51-22.
Waiving competitive bidding and declaring sole source and authorizing the city manager to accept Columbus FiberNet's proposal for the purpose of fiber installation.
Honored to do so. Thank you very much, so our staff report, Michael Farrar?
Thank you.
Good evening, council, tonight, I'm here to talk to you about a Phase 2 of a three-phase approach, where we're looking to build out fiber and double link fiber transport networks in the Southwest and West Innovation District. This particular area that we're looking at is going between Shire Rings Road and Warner Temple Road, where there's currently a gap. This will provide us a diverse path and additional redundancy in the area, providing us fiber to the curb there, and allowing us to extend out the double link transport out down Shire Rings up to Cos Gray. Phase 3 will be Cos Gray to 161, and then back to the OU campus, which we will be looking at trying to engage at next year. This work, we are asking to be done by Official Company, Double Link LLC, as they've been continuously working with us and making sure that all of our fiber is working correctly, maintained, and also works with our current right-of-way system, so we're open to any questions at this point that council may have.
Great, thank you very much, any public comment?
No.
Thank you, council.
Michael, I have a question, we had contemplated the thought of pre-purchasing some of the fiber, as we anticipated it getting to be more scarce with all of the federal dollars that were on the market to, for fiber installations. Since we are declaring this a single source, how are the prices that we're getting, how do they relate to pre-pandemic or pre-inflationary time prices?
They have significantly increased, we are monitoring that very closely, but we also are working with Team Official on our current plans for this year and also for the remainder of the year, so we can potentially pre-purchase at a lower rate, and also try and get on their schedule at an earlier time. So this coming year, we're hoping to have a more comprehensive list of works that we're gonna be working on, and hopefully be able to schedule those out for the entirety of the year, and be able to get those scheduled at that lower price.
Any idea what the, I don't know if you buy, if it's, how the prices are quoted, if it's per thousand linear feet, or 100 linear feet, or whatever it is, what is the, what is the percent increase that you're seeing?
On actual physical material... On actual physical materials, we're looking at about a 20% to 25% increase in total.
And that's fiber and the conduit?
Yes, yeah, so it's, the total materials themselves have increased significantly. We do know, working with them, that most, all of the 20, if not all at this point, all the 2023 fiber that is planned for production has already been pre-purchased. Luckily, Columbus Fiber Net has assured us that all the plans we have talked to them about, they will have plenty of supply for us for any of the projects that we're looking at as they are overbuilding and building other fiber networks very closely with other carriers, including the ones that they provide for us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Other guests?
I have a question. So we know the cost of the fiber is going up. Is the cost, officials' cost going up? Are they charging us more for their hourly rates and stuff as well? And if not, have they hid that somewhere else? My concern, as I brought up last time, is that we are giving all of our work to only them. And I just want to make sure that we start looking or have other options and know the hourly rate and the pricing of other available companies.
No, I appreciate that, and I will be, honestly, I did not compare between the last two work quotes, and I could be more than happy to do that and get back to council to confirm. I will say the rates that we have been seeing do meet the, that meet the ones that we've seen in the past. There, it's not a dramatic increase, and we do have to work off of, and you'll have to excuse me, the actual terminology, it's a fair living wage, is that correct terminology?
Prevailing wage.
Thank you, sorry, I couldn't, I was drawing a blank. So prevailing wage, so we will see an increase off of that than what you would see from a private build.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on the costs because they're pretty much having monopoly on this, and I'm, they know that. So just keep watching it closely and letting us know.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, Jamie, will you please call rule? Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. That brings us to other business this evening, and on other business, we have a micro-mobility pilot update, and our staff report is from JM Rayburn. And I understand we also have some guests online. If you could introduce those, please.
Yes, good evening, members of council and Vice Mayor DeRosa. We have Caitlin and Chris from Bird. So I have a slide to introduce them at the end of my presentation, and then if you have any questions or if they would like to add anything, that will be the opportunity to do so. But without further ado, very fun topic to talk about this evening. We are gonna talk about the background of the pilot, the micro-mobility demonstration pilot to date. If you recall, we were here in April, and we had a resolution passed to permit these devices to operate in our community. We'll talk about some of the feedback, including a survey that we had done, and then we'll talk about recommendations and how we want to move forward. So as I mentioned, we were here previously. Resolution 1822 was the resolution that was voted on to approve these devices to operate within travel lanes of roadways, but also sidewalks and shared use paths. And it was also requested that staff come back to provide an update before we were to move forward with the citywide expansion. To date, or I should say from May 1st to October 10th, we had ridership that totaled 60, over 6,200 rides by over 3,600 different riders. And over 15,000 miles have been accrued by all the riders in the city. So with that being said, we talked to Bird to see how their, our performance is doing. They're very pleased with the numbers. They do highlight it's a fairly small zone, so they would like to see that change in order to see how ridership would adjust with that. Since we had Phase One, we, it's also worth noting that we had a lot of restrictions in this operating zone. So the Dublin Link Bridge is a slow zone where the total miles per hour is capped at 10 miles per hour. And then we also have no-ride zones, particularly on Long Shore, and then within the parking garages, which I'll talk more about in a little bit. Bird has seen higher ridership over the summer with higher gas prices, so they do wonder if we're to go citywide, how that would also affect things, particularly if energy prices are higher, if that would impact ridership. So that's something that was noted by our friends at Bird. You can see on the slide, there's also a heat map. So on the right is where most rides have started, and then on the, excuse me, on the left side is where rides have started, and on the right side is where rides have ended. They look fairly similar, but you will notice there's a high concentration in historic Dublin, Elsalls, Bridge Park. During the Memorial Tournament, we did see some rides around the hotel clusters, around Franz Road and 161, and then some other areas, so that was interesting to take note. During the pilot, we have received, or I should say Dublin Police has received 11 complaints associated with scooter use. Most of these complaints center on inappropriate use of scooters by underage riders. And those complaints were shared with Bird, which have worked with us to make changes, which I'll talk about here in a little bit. And we also did a lot of in-app messaging to help educate the public, but also let them know some of the changes that we are making. As a result of the documented complaints and feedback from police, as well as some staff rides that we took to make sure everything was working as we wanted it to, we have made some operational changes to promote safe riding of the micro-mobility devices. In response to the complaints of underage riders on scooters, Bird did publish several in-app messages to remind them of the age, which is 18 years old, to rent a scooter, and also provided some examples on the screen. So if you look at A and B, there are different campaigns that were used to at least get the point across that you have to be appropriate age to ride these, as well as other safety reminders and being courteous and trying to get some etiquette with the community. In response, there was some scooter racing in parking garages that was noted by the Dublin Police. We made all the parking garages no-ride zones on both sides of the river to help deter that. What will happen if you enter no-ride zone is your scooter will decelerate at a safe rate, and then it will become very difficult to operate. So you can still use these scooters, but it becomes very arduous to do so. So the point is, you're not supposed to be in this space if it's giving you a lot of trouble. Furthermore, when Bird scooters are rebalanced in the evening, the scooters are proactively placed away from the Dublin Link Bridge, and that is an improved riding and also parking behaviors with the riders. With Long Shore Street, there, the no-ride zone and Dublin Link slow zone, they were refined during this time. So we did expand the zones to make them larger, and that's so that when you are scooting, you will have more of an opportunity to catch that zone and decelerate to an speed that is appropriate, or if you're not supposed to be there, to get out of that area, and you'll get the point based on the scooter usage. We do, we do recommend more operational changes based on the feedback we heard from Dublin Police, such as restricting Bird scooters from riding the travel lanes of roadways that have a speed limit posted higher than 25 miles per hour. Staff also recommends restricting Bird scooters from riding the travel lanes of Bridge Street in historic Dublin, as well as, and yeah, in historic district, as well as on High Street between Rockcrest Parkway and John Wright Lane. We'll talk about the survey results in here in a little bit, but based on the police information as well as looking at the data, we do want to propose an educational campaign on top of efforts that we're already doing. This can be ideas that would communicate, or I should say, it could be social media posts, it could be printed materials. We even thought about a sandwich board sign, such as we did with getting survey results for different, like, speed surveys and so on and so forth that we've done with other programs. And then we are thinking about doing a monthly workshop, thinking about mobility. So while the winter months are here, this is a great opportunity to visit senior care facilities. We host some events at the RAC Center and invite different operators of mobility. So it would almost be like different stations you can go to. So Bird can be one of those. We can invite COGO, COTA, the Dublin Connector Operator Share. So we're thinking of a way that we can raise awareness of the mobility options, but also have an opportunity for education and talk about safety and etiquette. So given all the changes that we'll talk about more in the educational campaign, we would advise as staff to delay the pilot boundary expansion until March, and so that we can have ample time to implement those changes. And then we would also recommend extending the pilot to the end of October next year, given the delay in Phase One to, or, excuse me, the delay in Phase Two to expand citywide. As we look at the survey results, we did do a survey as requested by Councilmember Aludo. We published the online survey of Phase One on August 18th of this year, and we collected 180 responses altogether. So the, the survey was not statistically done in that way, but it is a snapshot of the community to see what some of the attitudes are towards micro-mobility, so that's worth noting. We initially asked the survey respondents how they identify. So on this screen, you'll see a pie chart. I have to let you know that we asked people to check all that applied, so it will not equal 100% if you try to add up the numbers, but at least tells you that 72% of the respondents were residents, 51% work in the city. So there's some overlap here, as you can see. And then we had 8% identify as business owners in Dublin, and then 9% were visitors, and then 1% were identified as a student. After we asked how they identify, we asked how frequently or infrequently do you use a scooter? We found that 71% of the respondents have never ridden a scooter, which was interesting. About 13% have ridden a scooter once, and then combined, more than once, 16% have ridden a scooter at least more than one time. So it can be 10 times or more, but in that range. After we asked that, we asked about some of the benefits that you perceive with the program. According to the survey, the ability of scooters to provide useful mobility options for people ranked the highest on the list of benefits, with 56% of respondents agreeing to that. 52% of respondents said scooters help customers get to businesses a little further away than a walking distance. And then 47% said that scooters do improve air quality, and 46% said that scooters are fun, which is an ingredient often missing in transportation options. So that was interesting to get all these different data points. The data of, the data that we find does align with these findings, and that over 15,000 miles have been logged, so that was going back to some of the air quality. And we were, we worked with Bird to understand some of the metrics, and according to the data, over two metric tons of CO2 have been saved from going into Dublin air from people using scooters rather than driving around. So there are some benefits that we were able to put data behind. But we thought it was an important metric to share. Not to mention, you see a lot of smiles from people riding on scooters, or at least ones that we were able to take photos of. When we think about the key benefits by rider type, these were the top that, that we identified. And you'll see that these are broken into riders and non-riders to give you an idea of how each group responded to the attitudes of the survey. So when you think about benefits providing useful mobility options, 81% of riders agreed with that, while 46% of those who have not ridden a scooter agreed with that. Help customers reach businesses, 70% of riders agreed with that, whereas 44% of non-riders felt that was appropriate. And then 58% of riders agree that improves air quality compared to 42%. And then you see fun is 81% for those who have ridden, and not so much fun for those who have not ridden. After we asked about the benefits, we want to know where we can improve or what are some concerns that we can get ahead of as we think about the future of this pilot. So the survey asked respondents to rank a list of potential operational changes for the city to consider for the remainder of the pilot. Respondents largely agreed that there is a need for special identification for scooter parking and mandatory scooter parking at bike racks and other designated parking areas were something that we should also look at. Staff will continue to work with Bird on special identification for scooter parking, as well as the mandatory compliance for scooter parking at bike racks and other areas. So that's something that can be done through the app and other tools that they have at their disposal. And you can see at the bottom of the screen are some examples of specialized parking areas for scooters. So I can, I'm more familiar with the one on the right, which is a box or some sort of area that is identified in the right-of-way, it could be on the street where you can park. And there could be other delineators or the areas that you know that this is where you're supposed to park scooters. On the left is something that's a little more different, but there's more pain applications and bike racks that help indicate that this is an appropriate spot for scooters. So there are a few different options we can look at, but we certainly want to explore that with Bird and see what would be best for this community. Respondents were split on the topics of adding more slow zones and providing smartphone holders. A deeper dive into the data reveals that respondents who have never ridden a scooter tend to favor more regulations. All those who have ridden scooters tend to favor more amenities to riding, such as a smartphone holder. When we look at this, or I should say the observation, this observation is confirmed when looking at the data by rider type. So we again split the riders versus the non-riders, and we were able to identify which areas were most interested to those two groups. We finally asked, how should we move forward with this pilot? Should we expand the zone citywide? Should we maintain it as is, or should we eliminate the zone altogether? When asked, the respondents said that, or 57, 56% of respondents support the operation of scooters, either citywide or maintaining the current operating zone. The remaining 44% of the survey respondents would like to eliminate the operation of scooters altogether. And it was interesting because in analysis of that 44% of respondents who said to eliminate the zone, of that group, 88% have also never ridden a scooter. So there may be some dots to connect here. In looking at the rider type, we also see, you can see the riders and non-riders. So they'll add up to 100% through the columns if you look at each one. But it's interesting to see the differences here between the two groups and how they'd like to move forward with the pilot. So given the operational changes identified in the survey, as well as those advised by Dublin Police and expanding communications plan that we mentioned, or the communications campaign, staff recommends, as I said, delaying the pilot expansion citywide until March 17th of 2023 to ensure that these modifications are implemented successfully, and then therefore extending the pilot schedule to October 31st of 2023. Should council be supportive of extending the pilot project schedule? Staff will return to council at a future date prior to the expiration of the current pilot with an updated resolution to reflect the change. Should council agree to an alternative timeline for expansion of the pilot, staff recommends implementing the recommendations one through six now. And as I said, we have Caitlin and Chris that are here from Bird. If they have anything else to add, or if they have any questions from council, I'll leave it to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Lindsay, is there any public comment?
No.
Great. Council discussion? Andy, thank you.
So first question, the 18, age 18, how is that monitored or enforced?
Sure, so we ask in our, for all, of all riders that they have to be over the age of 18. So the first kind of thing that they see is when they sign up for an account, you'll be told that in the agreement that you signed before you ride. And we send out messages all the time reminding our riders that they need to be over the age of 18. If we find that this continues to be an issue, if we continue to see riders under that age, we have the ability to do what we call ID verification, where a rider will have to scan in their ID before they're allowed to ride. And that's kind of the way that we're able to sort of monitor underage riding. Of course, we can never kind of prevent ultimately someone underage from riding if their parent, you know, scans them in for them. But we find that the ID check does curb a lot of that behavior.
Thank you. Second question, for me, clutter is a big issue. I see these things laying all over the city. I've been told that the rider that leaves the scooter in an unauthorized spot, someplace other than the designated parking area, they, there's some sort of penalty. They can't ride for a period of time, or they're charged extra. How does that work?
Right, so we do have the ability to look and see if a rider has not parked their scooter properly. We ask that all riders at the end of the ride are required to take a photo to show that they've parked it in an upright position that is out of the right-of-way. If we do find that a rider has repeatedly not done this, we have the ability to kind of contact them directly. We usually start with a warning that says, listen, we see that you've. We usually start with a warning that says, listen, we see that you've, you know, been doing this. Please make sure that you're parking correctly and we give them some education. But if we find that they are, continue to repeat this bad behavior, we can terminate their account.
Other comments, questions? Chris?
I've got a question for JM. So these first three recommendations, remove bird scooters from travel lanes. So I, I think by, by inference, then we move them to sidewalks, right? If they, if they are going to travel a route and they can't be on a travel lane, i.e. the road, then they're going to be on the sidewalk.
They may be on the sidewalk. We do for the north-south have Derby and Mill that we're working towards establishing as a more of a mobility boulevard for individuals to use as a bypass north-south. So we would recommend that riders think of that route rather than riding in the, on the sidewalks, particularly on High Street. And with respect to traveling on Bridge Street, there were certain concerns with the traffic, but also the narrowing, the narrow, the narrow roadway that you have to work with. So we would ask in certain respects to use a sidewalk safely if possible. We have a preference, if possible, to use a shared use path. From experience, that seems to be the most comfortable ride rather than a sidewalk or brick pavers. But we'll continue to work with the community to understand where, where the preference is for that.
Yeah, particularly number three, restrict the operation of bird scooters in travel lanes on High Street between John Wright to Rock Cress. You know, I, I think, you know, maybe we look at not letting them in that area at all. Those sidewalks are challenging as it is. And the, the, you know, several of those sidewalks are quite narrow. And they're fairly heavily used by pedestrians. And, you know, we've worked so hard to try to encourage pedestrian activity. And I realize that bird scooters are a, a component of the pedestrian movement. But I, you know, those, those are things that I would want to look at. You know, I don't necessarily want these things on the sidewalks if they're not safe on the street. I think it's a conversation worth having.
So the preference would be a no-ride zone for the whole right of way? Just to make sure we're clear.
I just think it's a conversation worth having. I mean, if, if we can't put them on the street in up and down High Street, you know, do we want to put them on the sidewalks?
I, I think that's a really good point, Chris. I mean, I guess I don't understand why we have to get them off the road. I mean bicyclists bike on the road. In some cases, the sidewalks in that particular area are very narrow. I don't, in some cases, I can't even see two people walking abreast, let alone having a scooter riding along there too. So unless you're going to have the scooter speed reduced to a walking speed, which may sort of defeat the point of it, and we want to keep them out of the roadway there. I just, I don't know how you're going to do it there and make it usable from either a pedestrian standpoint or the scooters riders standpoint.
JM, I just want to clarify some point. When we extend the road and put in that, the, the new road off High Street, and I'm having a mental blank at the name of the street. Frank?
Franklin?
No, Franklin. The, the road extension will be large enough to take Bird, so that we can start to get some mobility along.
There's a bike lane on, I believe there is a bike lane designed on that.
And that makes some sense.
Yeah.
I, I can just tell you as a bike rider, you, you can't ride on those sidewalks.
I agree. I think it's hard.
You can't really ride on those streets today. It's just, there's just too much traffic and it's a too condensed area to.
Particularly when you have.
Compare it with the bike ride, which I do down there. Particularly when you have on-street parking and that just adds another level of complexity to being on the road. But it also adds a level of complexity to the sidewalk as well.
Yeah, I think with Franklin Street extension, if that's the project we're talking about, that would be a nice bypass to High Street, particularly going right to the library where we contemplate more investment in mobility.
Thank you and thank you for the memory prompter. So there would be then some designation so that people would know how to find that road, right? There would be some markings of some sort like there is with biking, et cetera. So people could discover it and find their way to up and down that street. Is that right? I'm, I'm getting ahead on, but.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And when Franklin Street is completed, that will help, I think, with more of the education.
Yeah, you know, I don't think we're going to get to see the fullest use of this until we get the businesses using these and the area of exploration gets wider. And the people on our fringe corporations can go downtown, have dinner or lunch or something and come back on one of these. And then I have a question for the Catherine, the voice in the sky. I was just came back from Washington and I noticed that, and I don't know if this is illegal or not, but everybody, they were using these in Washington DC a lot. Obviously to get to the different historical things. And an adult would be on the scooter and a child be up front, both with helmets, both very orderly, both look very safe. But a younger child would be on the front of the scooter with a dad or the mother behind him. Is that permissible?
No, that's not. And that's something again that we have outlined in our agreement when people sign on to the app. We explicitly say that the scooter is meant for one person only. But like I said, you, you know, it's hard to prohibit sometimes this bad behavior. So we ask that, you know, if, if city, you know, PD or if anyone sees this behavior happening, if they could ask them to, you know, please stop riding two at a time, that would be great.
Other question?
I was just gonna reiterate, I agree that we shouldn't be riding on the sidewalks in historic Dublin. And so if they have, we can't ban High Street then because then there's nowhere for them to go right now. So then they'd be useless right there.
Yeah, and instead of High. Instead of High Street, thank you. I think Mill and Derby would be a good near-term solution until Franklin Street is extended.
Yeah, so we'd have to definitely get the signage so that it shows that they go up there. The other thing is, I don't, did you pick March 17th? Because is that our St. Patrick's Day parade happens to be on that day this year?
It seemed like, it just, I mean, it seemed like a good day to pick it, but we can, I'm flexible.
I, I say that because I think the most useful these could be is when people have to park far away for our events and want to get closer to our events. So people who are parking in our garages on the east side of the river that want to come to the parade, you know, could use these to get a little closer. Likewise, you know, people park pretty far away for the Irish Festival and fireworks. And, you know, they probably would appreciate the scooters in that sense, so.
The parade is scheduled for the 11th next year.
I think you should maybe move that date up so that I could at least try it out. See if we could somehow promote it for these people that are parking far away for the parade.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Amy. So my question to follow up with what Amy's saying, because I really love that idea, is we, we could introduce more scooters for a temporary period of time, like for that weekend or what have you, right?
The fleet itself?
Yeah.
Yes, we just want to make sure that the operating zone is expansive enough to incorporate some of these events.
Right. I think that's a really, I think we need to explore that.
And I think there'd have to be some sound planning because if we're not going to let them up and down High Street, certainly they won't be able to navigate the sidewalks at that point in time. There has to be a designated spot for drop-off that, you know, that is geotracked or, or something, or geo-fenced, I'm sorry, that, that might be appropriate for that, so.
Yeah, and I will say the Memorial Tournament was an interesting case study in that respect because we did see more rides towards the end of the day. I think when people are getting a little fatigued and it seems like a great option to get to your final destination.
Other comments? Okay then, so I would just make one, one comment that I'd mentioned to somebody. I'm so delighted that we're going to get some e-bikes for staff to use. I think we should have some scooters too. So if we're going to test these things and use these things, I think having some of them in our own fleet. And I could only imagine what that branding will look like. I think that would be fantastic. I know we just passed a capital plan, but maybe there's some way to do that, but that would be wonderful. So I, I'm, JM, as I understand it, what you need from us this evening is if we're agreement with this, I guess with some modification on the, the date. I, I think what you'd like is, we need some legislation, right, to continue this pilot and expand it. So I moved to direct staff to draft some legislation, extending the duration of this with the modifications that we have discussed this evening. Is there a second?
I'll second. Amy, if you could please call roll.
Ms. Cram? Yes. Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Great. And JM, if I, if I could ask that, rather than wait all the way until October 17th to check back in, maybe we would have a, a mid-point check-in. You know, although we will be allowing the duration, we might want to revisit some things being that it's going citywide at that point.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. And, and I believe you give updates to the Public Services Committee too as along the way, so. And we thank our partners in the sky and your help on the ground here in Dublin. And we appreciate your partnership and your work with us on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
With that, we move to staff comments. Megan?
Good evening, members of council. I do have a few items this evening. This year's Spooktacular event was a success. We had perfect weather. It was very well attended and there were great costumes that did not disappoint. I'd like to thank council for attending and distributing candy. And I'd also like to thank the 30 organization and businesses that came out and also helped pass out candy. This includes our Dublin Police Department, Dublin Schools and our partners at Washington Township. Leadership Dublin Day is this Wednesday. We have 27 class members that will meet for an overview of city services and then they will split into groups among public service, parks and recreation, planning and economic development. The purpose of Leadership Dublin Day is to introduce these class members to the staff who both oversee and conduct the daily work of city operations and also lead the strategies set forth by city council. I'd like to also update you on a recent Recreation Services, Community Rex, Dublin Community Rex Recreation Center membership promotion. Prior to the pandemic, membership numbers were near 7,800. They were reduced to nearly 3,500 as a result of the pandemic. Since then, Rex Services staff have explored multiple promotional opportunities to increase membership sales. Last month, staff implemented a back-to-school promotion where paid-in full annual memberships were discounted between 6% to 10% based on type of membership. And during the 10-day promotion period, 756 memberships were renewed by previous members, existing members and initiation of new members. Revenue produced during the 10-day period totaled $125,000. Memberships continue to increase and are now above 6,100. And staff will continue to explore more options to get the memberships back to pre-pandemic numbers.
That was a brilliant promotion. So I don't know whose idea it was, but they deserve a big old pat on the back. So I renewed mine and got probably 10 other people that I know. I was like, hey, guess what? And they renewed theirs as well. So, and actually they did a great job too at the front desk. They were asking everybody, because the, there was a line, which shocked me. But they were asking everybody, did you come in because of the promotion? And invariably every person said yes. So it was, that was a great job. I, I really applaud the creativity and, and the ideas. Keep them coming.
That's great feedback. We appreciate that. The Riverside Crossing Park Outdoor Ice Rink will return to the East Plaza this season. The rink will be installed throughout the week of November 7th and will begin operation in mid-November prior to the tree lighting event, which is scheduled for December 1st. Last week, the police department was awarded $310,000 in grant funding through the state of Ohio First Responder ARPA that Governor Dewine and the Ohio General Assembly dedicated to first responders last year to help counter various pressing issues exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. These funds will be used for annual wellness checkups and advanced individual wellness training for all members of the Dublin Police Department. I'd like to thank Chief Pis and team, including Deputy Chief Tabernick, Accreditation Manager Lyndon Odenthal and the Wellness Committee members for their ambition and initiative in applying for the grant as well as their continued commitment to ensuring our department members have the appropriate training and resources to improve their overall mental health, wellness and resiliency. And as we learn more about the grant, we will share additional information about the grant funding and programming that goes along with that. And then last but not least, the Snowgo Experience will have a fun upgrade this year. We will show our snow plows in real time on the Snowgo dashboard. And we're also asking community members to help us name our plows. So through this Wednesday, we encourage the community to share their best snowplow name ideas via the submission form on the city website. The finalists will be announced on our Facebook page on October 31st and voting will then be open until November 4th with the final 10 names revealed on November 7. Additionally, we are partnering once again with the Dublin City Schools for our Paint the Plow program. And the art classes at each participating school will also have the opportunity to name the plow that they paint. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Megan, I have one question relative to the ice rink facility. Last year, they had a container on site there that kind of looked like it was in need of some repairs or maintenance. Is, will, will that facility be the same this year? Or are there other plans for that storage adjacent to the rink?
We have Matt Ehrman ready to answer that question.
Thanks for the question. We've actually had conversations with the operator about that exact topic. Last year was pretty much a pilot program to see how it worked. And this year, we're going to try to make as many improvements. Aesthetics is one of those. So we're going to look at different options of where that is actually located and maybe even do a skin wrap on the container itself and decorate it as well as the chiller, provide screening for the chiller unit that sits on the, the northern end of the rink.
That's great. My recommendation was going to be some sort of wrap. And I think it would be really nice to have a scene, you know, you see like in LA, they have the angel wings, something where it might be, might draw people to it and become an asset if there was whatever the wrap design was by people that are far more creative than me. It might be a photo opportunity and, you know, you might have a social media tag on it or something that could help generate some traction. So thanks for doing that. I, it was, it was really great last year, but it, it looked like a pilot program. And hopefully this year it will look like a more permanent installation or a temporary permanent installation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Megan. Takes us to council reports. I don't believe we have any council committee reports. Okay, we're moving right along. Council liaison reports, Board of Education? No. Andy Logan Union? No?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Mr. Reiner, Dublin Arts?
Dublin Arts is going to have Masayuki return, who's probably our favorite artist. And there's a lot of people that collect his patterns. He'll be coming back in November 8th through the December 15th. And this is the call for entries from the Emerging Students Art Exhibits. And the deadline for our students in all our schools is December the 10th. So, and that's always a really interesting exhibit. See what kind of talent we have in our schools. It's amazing.
Great. Thank you. Washington Township?
Yeah, I attended the meeting on, it was October 11th. And they had requested some information and update on the Brown Harris Cemetery, which I provided. And thank you for staff for giving me some printouts I could give them. They also wanted to share that Rings Road is now open through Amlin. And they still have some work to do on the alleys behind, but they said they're seeing lots of people using the sidewalks and happy that it's reopened. The last thing was that the trustees have been kind of inquiring about additional cemetery space in the township. And they asked the administrator to kind of look into that process and also to contact the city about options or just to know what the city was doing. So, which I believe they have sent an email on that. So that's all I had.
Great. Thank you very much. Chris?
Yeah, for Morpsy, we had the Summit on Sustainability last week. We had several staff members that attended and Amy Cram attended with me as well. We attended a few of the presentations there that were really informative. You know, if you want to know if in-person events are back, they had more than 500 people registered for that. And so that was akin to pre-pandemic registration numbers. So really, it was a, a good, good opportunity to hear about sustainability efforts in the region and some ideas of what we might incorporate. Hopefully we'll be hearing from staff that bringing, that attended that would bring some of those forward for our consideration. And then also I'd just like to mention, we. And then also, I'd just like to mention, we, we're going to head to Bell Fountain on Thursday and see about the historic revitalization that Bell Fountain has done. They've won some awards with the work that has happened there, so looking forward to the opportunity to go and see, see how they, how they were able to navigate those processes and come out with a successful project. Relative to the Planning and Zoning Commission, our last agenda meeting was canceled. The chair was out of town on work, traveling. I did reach out to her by phone, following it and conveyed to her some of what I thought our collective thoughts would be on the applications that were before them in last Thursday's meeting. And so they're doing a great job, appreciate the work they do.
Great, thank you. That brings us to Roundtable. Amy?
Okay, as Chris had mentioned, I went to the MORPC Sustainability Conference, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to the staff because in a couple of the sessions I went to, Dublin was actually used as an example of moving initiatives forward that MORPC had requested the area do. So kudos to Dublin for being named in several of the sessions, at least the ones that I attended. We kind of divided and conquered the, tried to go to as many as we could. Also, that same week, I went to the Ohio Municipal League's Annual Conference, and the, the big thing I got from that was continued, they want to, continued push for advocacy to contact our state senators and representatives to, you know, pay attention to what's going on in the State House and to keep our voices being heard. And also the, just all the grant money opportunities that are out there, a lot of them don't apply necessarily to Dublin. One that I heard several conferences, actually, I think I heard it at the MORPC 12, was the electric vehicle charging stations and how much money was out for those, which would apply to us. So I just want to keep the word out for us to contact our legislators, but also staff and anyone else.
Thank you, Andy.
I just wanted to thank Matt and the finance staff for their dedication, sacrifice, and the long hours in getting the CIP over the finish line tonight. Thank you.
John?
The Veterans Committee had wanted me to ask city council if we could make Dana McDaniel an ex-officio member for the city's Veterans Committee. I, I don't know if that's a resolution or how we would go about that.
I believe that would be by resolution.
Okay. Well, let us know what, what you think, and we also might want to ask Dana, maybe he might want to come back as a voting member since he's a citizen in Dublin. But they thought this would be a nice honor for him. And also our condolences to Dave Guyon's family on the passage of his father, and the funeral will be in Manheim, Pennsylvania at 9:30 on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Christine?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I've given a couple of updates intermittently, but, so I've been working with this Workforce Development Committee and have really enjoyed the partnership of all the school districts and the other folks that have been involved. So by October, by the end of this week, all of the grant requests are due into the State of Ohio, and I wanted to let you know that this partnership is going to apply for a Spark Grant. And a Spark Grant is just what it sounds like. It's really seed money to set a spark that will hopefully ignite a fire in the development of workforce in our region. We are not the applicant of the, for the grant request. The applicant will be the Ohio Workforce Development Board for Franklin County. And so they will actually be writing the grant, and then the, if we were successful, we will look at ways that we can implement this. So I don't have the grant requests yet. I don't believe it's complete, that we are waiting for some letters of recommendation. And there is a requirement for partnerships relative to this grant as well, and so there are several corporations that will have to come forward and promise matching dollars because it is a matching grant. So those processes are being navigated, but the intention is by the end of the month that the, that the grant will be written. The, the vein that the grant is in is going to be what they're calling ARC. And ARC is Artificial Intelligence, Robotics, and Cyber Security. So those would be the areas of focus that the workforce development would be happening. There's a lot of workforce development around nursing and, and many other career paths, but this is one that has seemed to be of particular interest to the Lieutenant Governor who oversees the Ohio Workforce Development Board. So we thought that that would be a good space for us to operate. And I think particularly as it relates to Dublin, it is appropriate because those are many of the needs that our employers are looking for. And so if we can develop that workforce in a certificate manner or something akin to that that would directly feed to our local businesses, it would really help them out in securing the workforce of the future. So I, I hope to be back next time at Roundtable and tell you the good news that we were the proud recipients, but at this point, I'm just telling you that we are going to be applicants.
Wonderful, thank you. Just a couple of things. I will echo Spooktacular was spectacular. I thoroughly enjoyed that. Beautiful day and what a nice community event, so thank you to all staff for that. Thank you to the resident leadership who attended the Fall HOA meeting, that was very well-attended, a lot of good discussion there, and we thank you all for your partnership. So if there's nothing else with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.